How you doing, Steve? Susan, you okay?
Good.
Good.
Feels weird sitting to the right of you guys. Start voting on things.
I got a text. Oh, yeah.
Welcome to Wednesday, August 27th, Commissioner meeting. If you will stand and join me in the pledge and a short prayer.
Pledge allegiance to your flag, united by saints and renars, to the republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this meeting, that you help us to make sound decisions for our community in all things that we do, in your heavenly precious name, amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes previous meeting, and if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Have commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims, and if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review payroll, and if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero. We have a report from the weights and measures from July 16th to August 15th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have an IT monthly report for July of 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have Memorial Park, Hans affidavit, 2016-98 for a merit turf amount of $3,391.58. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I assume that's to approve.
Affirmative.
All those favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Next up, Mr. Murphy. Whatever. You can play your microphone and stand there if you want to. I don't. And I'm scared he's getting comfortable.
I won't be here long. I am here to seek approval on the first draw for the Brookfield Farms project, which is the Ready2 Housing. It's coming from Food and Beverage. That draw is an amount of $435,427. That is for.
Sorry, I don't have it with me.
Mass excavation and grading.
No, I was being honored. I didn't have the money.
And that is part of our local match towards the public infrastructure on the housing project over on Washington Street, where Ready2 funds are slated for 3 million. So this is one of two draws, and the second draw is anticipated in May of 26.
And are we gonna?
You would like a motion to approve that, huh?
Please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Brookfield Farms' first draw, $435,427 even. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
Thank you. The next item is one of you. I need one of you to serve on the ready leadership group. That if we have to make changes or reallocate, and I'm not sure that we will, but if we do, I want representation from the commissioners. And so I don't know if you're prepared to answer that, but I introduced it last month, or your last meeting.
Yes, you did.
In all seriousness, I can wait if you're not ready, but I'll keep coming back because if we need to call the meeting, I don't want to have to do this. I don't want to have to come and say, well, which one's attending? If you need another couple of weeks.
I don't have a problem doing it. Unless somebody else wants to, I'll do it, but.
I nominate Steve.
I second. That was fast.
You shouldn't have volunteered.
Well, I figured I was gonna say unless you guys want to discuss it for till next meeting, but okay. Do I need to vote on that?
I think you could just say.
You can just say.
You're it.
Well.
And if there needs to be an alternate, I'll back you up. Okay?
That works.
Okay.
Are you happy now?
Thank you. I pretty well. Thank you. On a personal note.
Say be careful what you wish for.
No, on a personal note, and I know this goes beyond just this commissioners and it involves the council, but I appreciate all the work that you guys are causing to happen at the courthouse. I know it's a pain to county government employees and the public, but it is, you know, my office is right across the street, so I get to at least see the exterior work on that 1860s building, and I just thank you for investing in the historic courthouse. Appreciate it.
Well, it's.
That's very encouraging.
Yeah, I know it's long and frustrating for everybody, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, hopefully everything will work out when it's done.
Any questions?
When did you say the second draw was?
Anticipated in May.
May. Okay.
Of approximately the same amount.
Good.
Gives you the same thrills looking at a White House, a lighthouse.
I like our courthouse better.
Thanks, sir. I don't see anybody from the chamber. Don't see anybody from Josh's office. Health Department. Coroner's office. Brayden is not here this evening. Joe, do you have anything? Thank you. By the way, our prayers go out to Brayden. His dad was in a bad accident. It's reason he's not here, and apparently was lifelined to Dayton, Ohio. So Brayden, his dad, his dad was in a bad accident, and his dad was lifelined to Dayton, Ohio. That's why Brayden is not here. So keep him in our thoughts and prayers, his dad.
It's pavement marking firm in, and this particular contractor has been doing the pavement markings for us 2021. And I, he sent me a quote. He's raised his price because he having trouble holding his original price in 21. I kind of wonder why. The. This is a yellow and white markings on pavement. It's a, he says minimum 300,000 linear feet, and that's because he charged mobilization and demobilization if he didn't. So it's a, I think it's a pretty good price, and trying to get a contractor with as busy as these guys are, it'd probably be a good thing. At $300,000, or 300,000 linear feet, we're talking $45,000, less than $50,000.
Joe, since I'm not quick at doing linear feet math, what do we think in 300,000 linear field cover?
Pretty much most of the county.
Okay. Is that both sides and center lines, or is that just center line?
Most of ours is center line. There's a few little places like 300 South that has edge line, but not very many. Okay, so that'll be white, but most of it will be yellow. Roads like Sulfur Springs Road, Greensboro Pike, they need it bad. The curvy roads, they should be number one, yeah.
I take it you have this in your budget?
Speaking for Brayden, yeah.
Always make sure. So you would like approval on this then?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to approve the accurate striping.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 45,000 for the 300,000 of linear feet of striping. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
That's all I've got, Seedy. Thank you.
Alrighty. Surveyor's office. Tom Green not show up? Okay. Next, Sheriff's Department. I have here a request for Nate Kovacs to purchase his duty weapon upon his retirement. We've always done that in the past. Nobody's speaking to the two. We've always done it. I just didn't know if there was a presentation, but you guys, that request that in front of me. Okay.
Make a motion to approve this and thank Captain Kovacs for his service.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Debbie, do you have anything? See Jenny? Don't see our new park superintendent. Mr. True? See my B N S treasure. Troy? That pretty much runs through all the departments. Next on the itinerary is a quote for the fitness room. I was unaware of this, so I'll let, I guess, Susan, you were the one who.
Yeah, Matt, did you want to come up and present to us? Matt reached out to me, and we've had some discussion about the remaining jail bond money and the priorities of the sheriff's office, and this is one of those things on the list.
And we had discussed the building out back, which this was the next thing we had put a focus into. I know this has come up a year, probably two ago, about finally equipping the fitness room that they were kind enough to build into this facility for us with the equipment that would allow us to actually do some training in that room. I went back to the same company that we originally went to. They updated the quo. They laid out the space, the best use we could get out of the area we have, and the, and the equipment they thought would fit in there and still give us room to move around.
Now, you mentioned then that some of the equipment that's in there now could be used for the inmates then.
Correct. So the equipment that's in there now, I know the, a couple of the items have already been moved back to allow the inmates to have something in their rec area because there was nothing back there. And then there's very little equipment in there now, but the few things like the Smith machine and the one other machine will allow them some more flexibility back there for workout for the inmates that are housed in our facility.
Did you get different quotes from different companies, or how did you?
This is the company that represents, like, basically if you're a government agency, this is where they're going to turn us to, to go to this place to get the best price from hammer strength. They basically have state reps. It's like when we do a lot of other things with vehicles and things like that. That's how we ended up with Life Fitness. They're able to give us basically the government rate.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
How does that work? Coming from the jail bond, how, I've been hearing about this for a long time, but I don't know that we've spent anything from jail bond. What's the significance of that?
It can be used for construction and for equipment that's used within the jail building.
The balance of the jail bond is about 700,000. The sheriff's office does have some priorities with their outbuilding and this equipment. We did some tables and chairs for this room, and I've heard some discussion about parking outside, and so.
And that's another thing I'm sure will be brought up. We had in-service training where we had Newcastle Police Department and our sheriff's department doing some, we had outside company come in to do some, I'll call it, advanced training for our patrol officers as far as being able to collect V and A for firearms, and we literally had no parking in the back. It had to overflow into the front where during the day, that's a busy parking lot for people come here to do business and things like that. But that's, that's another avenue to address another day, but we are a little short on parking, especially on the east side.
I'm not sure you have a room over there to go very far.
Yeah, I think that'll have to be talked to with DOC, because I know our property line runs pretty close to where we end our parking lot because, you know, they were gracious enough to give us, but like I said, that's a discussion for another day, but here we are. We do run into situations where we have in-service training, or we have tried to utilize this building. Obviously, we've curtailed that back with the amount of meetings we're having out here now to bring outside training in because one, it's cheaper, but we don't pay send officers out, and two, we usually get some sort of either money or spots in those classes if we allow those companies to come in and provide their service. And we do run short on parking on the very busy days. Well, you'll come in and there'll be people parked in the grass or wrapped all the way around to the back, which then causes issues because the back is where we have the big trucks come in daily making food and other deliveries to the back, so.
I think you have more room maybe on this side.
Yeah, I think that potential's there, but that, like I said, no. Try not to go too far down that road, hold you guys. Now, that's for the big losses. I just know what we run into when we have training.
Well, I know this has been a priority of the sheriff's office for a while, and I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to one. Because I've got nothing but complaints all day about us doing this and spending this money, so my phone's been ringing off the hook since the itinerary was published. Okay, next up is the Purdue extension contract. They want to wait until October for us to prove that because Molly Hunt wants to be here, so I told him that was not a problem. So we'll take that off our itinerary. Next up is the ARA Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Drawl Number Two. The total invoices claims submitted for payment constructions, $55,065.75. They request $47,795.75 from the CDBG and $7,270 from local funds. And the ARA is contractor is Neil's Custom Exterior. For the amount of the claim is $36,870, and four to two consulting is $18,195.75 for the total of the $55,065.75. Then the CDBG amount is a total of $47,795.75 for local funds to match $7,270. So the county, according to this, county must disperse the grants within five days. Receipt county cannot have excess $5,000 grant funds on hand more than five days. Please send the copies to them for deposits. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next up is our holiday schedule. Have the commissioners had a chance to review this, and do they approve there? Or have any questions or changes?
Motion to approve.
A second.
I will point out that on Friday after Christmas, we have added that in there. There are no flex days. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bobby, on this one. And, and since it's a non-election year, so the Friday was added since nobody's going to want to come back for one day and then be gone again.
New Year's Day is on Thursday, so we had Friday.
But it's on, well. Okay, right here, it's Wednesday and Thursday. No, we're leaving at noon on Wednesday. I'm sorry. Yes, and then Friday's the 25th. So we got Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We're leaving early, and you wanted Friday after New Year's Eve. Yeah, my mistake. I said wrong. New Year's, not Christmas. Hey, you're lucky I'm here. So if everybody's okay with adding that Friday into there, and you're okay with it, so do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the holiday schedule. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. The next thing on the itinerary I don't believe needs to be approved by vote, county employee going to training. We've never. We've never had to do that before, so Scott can go to training. He just waited long enough. He may be sleeping on the side of the road, but.
Debbie, he did ask for instructions on how to reserve his hotel and everything, so I'm going to send him, send him to you.
Next up, we have Henry County Health Board Trustees selection. Uh, as chairman of Henry County Health or Hospital Board of Trustees, I was recently informed that one of our members, Mister Sheldon Dyance, will be resigning his position as a board member effective September thirtieth of this year. Sheldon has faithfully served on the board since January of eighty nine, most recently reappointed in twenty twenty five. He has been an integral part of the board and wish him all the best in the future. The continued success of the Henry County or Henry Community Health is due to large part of the strength and dedication of its Board of Trustees. Our board brings together board-based broad-based knowledge of essential to hospital operations, deep understanding the needs of the community and a strong commitment in addressing the challenges facing healthcare systems today. The willingness of our members to engage, learn and offer meaningful insight is key to our effectiveness. Pursuant to I C code sixteen dash twenty two dash two dash eleven, the board is responsible for submitting the county commissioners, at least of up to three candidates to fill the vacancy along with their qualifications. For the purposes, letter formally requests two candidates to fill the remainder of Sheldon Knight's term on the board. We believe the ideal board member brings balance of leadership, skills, knowledge, healthcare industry familiarity with community we serve. Collectively, the board must possess a broad base of knowledge, expertise on which the board can depend. The individuals below exemplify these qualities and have expressed the willingness to serve. Candidates listed in order of the board's preference, and we believe either candidate will be of value to the Board of Trustees. Erica Gilman resides in Newcastle with her husband Bob, two children, Lauren and Scotch, certified financial planner for Edwards Jones in Newcastle. Erica currently serves on Henry Community Health Foundation Board of Henry County Community Foundation. Erica's expertise and knowledge, finance, healthcare, strong ties would make her an exceptional asset to the board. John Madison, long lifelong resident of Henry County and practices law with defer Varan, currently serves on the foundation board, treasurer of the Newcastle Henry County Economic Development Corporation and is a member of the Henry County Redevelopment Commission. Recently concluded twelve years of service of Blue River Valley School Board. His him and his wife Mandy live in northeast Henry County. John's legal expertise, strong ties, local affairs would also make him a valuable addition to the board. Currently, the board is, uh, himself, John Pigeon, Marion Bud Shore and Debbie Ware. So they asked for our consideration on selecting a board member. Do I have any preference from this board?
So I know that I've heard conversation in the past about a desire for the hospital board to possibly be more collaborative with the county or with the county EMS. And so I would like to make a motion that we table this and I'd like to meet with both of these individuals and see what their priorities are in that area for collaborating with the county.
I have a motion to table this request for this moment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Someone actually wanting to talk with these two candidates? Okay.
And and I can send a summary if that streamlines things or we all could, I think, whatever people prefer.
And on last thing on our itinerary is informational pursuant to the I C code thirteen dash fifteen dash three dash one. Letter serves notice in Indiana Department Environmental Management, the Office of Water Quality received a sanitary sewer construction permit on August twelfth, twenty twenty five from Mister Scott Adams, D C Development Charleston, Indiana. If proved I D N would permit the would allow the application structure sanitary sewers from Brookville Farms, Newcastle, Indiana addition. This is notice was sent to the mayor and the Board of Commissioners. We don't need to take any action on that.
Just the notice.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.